I will. Okay, great. So with that, I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna start us off with the standard things that we need to do, which is call, actually, Adam, if you don't mind, I'll ask you to call us to order.
Sure, so we'll call this a sort of special meeting to order, and Heather, if you could do the roll call?
Sure, I will do the roll call, and let me pull up my list here. All right, so we have Stephen.
Here.
And could you say where you are located at jurisdiction wise?
Here in Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Great, Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jen, I'm here from Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Great, Alan?
Alan Haber, I'm here from Paris, France.
Right in. Sarah?
Here from Ann Arbor, we're apparently with a thunderstorm warning.
Mm hmm.
Just saying that in case anybody's internet goes out, I feel like that's why.
Jeffrey?
Here, Ann Arbor.
Camilla?
Here, St. Carlos, California.
You get the second furthest award. Rita?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Great, Frank?
Here, and I guess third place, Eastport, Michigan.
Nice. Adam?
Adam here in Ann Arbor, just having gotten back from where Frank was.
Nice.
Apologize for being a couple minutes late.
Well, welcome back. And then Tom is going to join us a little bit later, he's running a little bit late. And Erica? We still can't hear you, I see that you unmuted, but we still can't hear you.
Still muted, unfortunately.
I think I might switch to a different computer because.
Now we got you.
Okay, here in Ann Arbor, but I'm gonna log off and log back in at the different computer, because I think this one's gonna have some weird audio issues.
Okay, all right, we'll look for you in a few minutes.
And we have public comment then now?
Heather, I'm also here from Ann Arbor, Michigan.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, Alice. I really apologize that I skipped over you. Anybody else that I missed? Okay, well, welcome, yes, so we do need to do public comment, and we have two people that have joined us. So if anybody from the public would like to speak, and I see Robert has his hand up, so I'm going to unmute you. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Heather, Robert Black, I just want to forego any real comment time and just applaud you for the work you did in your last meeting. Very much an understanding of the commonalities you have and commonalities and the beginning resolution of your differences, and I applaud you for that. And I look forward to a really productive session today, it looks like you've well organized, and I see that you're very respectful with each other, and I just applaud you and encourage you to continue that to the best results you can get today. And that you might use this as the beginning of a series of similar work sessions that have different topics toward your short term goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great, I think we can move on.
Heather, do you have to do an approval of the agenda at all?
What's that?
Do we have to do an approval of the agenda?
Well, technically, we're not really supposed to be doing motions or anything like that, you know, this isn't, it's supposed to be a non-voting meeting. So, yeah, so I don't know that we necessarily have to do an approval of the agenda. That being said, does anybody have anything that they would like to change or alter or anything for us to consider that?
I didn't find the agenda, so.
Well, let me post it for you right now, or show it to you on screen. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep. So next up, we have an icebreaker. And then we're gonna have an informational discussion and Q and A with city staff and DDA. So that's with Maura and Deborah. And then we're gonna talk about the near term activation prioritization exercise, so that's us trying to get into really prioritizing what we think is the most important to us in terms of advancing more quickly than other things. And then begin developing recommendations, then we'll have another public comment at the end. Okay, great. Well, what I did want to do, I'm not sure that everybody knows, or I don't know if Maura and Deborah knows everybody. So if you don't mind going around and giving a brief introduction of yourself again, and then the icebreaker that I have today, which has been one of my favorite icebreakers during this COVID times, is to just pick any object that's next to you that represents something about you or something fun or has kind of a nice, good, short story to it. And I know that some people don't like icebreakers, I happen to really like icebreakers because I do think that it does warm us up. And I think it gets people talking and getting to know each other a little bit better, it helps the group bond a little bit more. But if you're uncomfortable really doing a show and tell, I understand that too, and you can always pass, so please go ahead, why don't we start with Alan Haber, who's in my upper right screen, and then after that, it'll be tough.
Well, hello. I am in Paris. And I had a supper last evening in a neighborhood cafe. And I was watching the passing traffic. And Ann Arbor is very interested in non-motorized transit. I noticed in the course of our dinner, I kept track, 80 cars went by, and also 80 bicycles, exactly even. And also about 17 motorcycles and motor and motor bikes, and about eight motor scooters, five buses, and one emergency vehicle. This was a place, a neighborhood street, where the bicycles and the cars were equal. If we could do that at Ann Arbor, it would be extraordinary. And I was, I'd never seen that before, that bicycles and cars had equalized, and wowee. So that's my icebreaker, it's something I had never seen before, and I would love to see it in our town. From Paris. The Alouette Cafe, delicious food, too.
All right, Jeff, you're up, and you can say your name and a little something about yourself, and if you have an object next to you that you'd like to share a story about, and then Camilla, you're up after that. Whoops, you're muted, Jeff.
Yeah, hi, I'm a longtime Ann Arbor resident, I've been here 30 plus years. And I'm a professor at a small business college, Clear University, and Howell, it has an offshoot, no, it did have an offshoot here, hopefully again. And I teach sustainability economics and a lot about commons and commenting lately. And I have an object next to me, which is an old Queen Anne desk that my grandmother gave me. Queen Anne being in the, I guess it's the 18th century, which, you know, keeps me in touch with history and I'm very emotionally attached to, and it's kind of full of nonsense, but it's fun and good, and keeps me connected to my grandmother, thanks.
Right, Camilla?
Hey, folks, I'm Camilla, she/her/hers pronouns. I am calling in from the San Francisco Bay area, where I'm doing an internship with the City of San Francisco's Metropolitan Transportation Agency. When I'm not doing that, I am an urban planning student at U of N. I guess I can share, my earrings are made from a local vendor at the Cary Town Market, Artisan Market. And fun fact is that I have my own clay earring business. I am very passionate about clay jewelry and making art in my free time.
Very cool, thank you, Camilla. All right, we have Alice up next, and then Sarah.
Hi. I have so many objects around me, I just, I just wanted to mention that I was trying to recall the year of my first deep dive into the, what was called then at the time, the Community Commons Proposal. And three days in the summer, just totally absorbed in writing the report, which we had to, or the response to the RFP that we had to eventually, in December, defend and explain in a public commentary. And Heather tells me it's on our website, available there, I haven't seen it ever, it was videotaped. It'll be interesting to see for me, because I gave myself chills when we were concluding our presentation, but that's how deeply I've felt about this idea from my own perspective. And I guess I could mention that behind me is my grandmother's cake carrier, a red metal box that saw many cakes taken to rural churches at the time that I did not even know her. So I've got my grandmother's cake carrier and my grandfather's woodworking bird pictures, which are made of different types of wood without any artificial color. So that's just sort of the odds and ends that I'm surrounded by right now, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Sarah, and then Stephen after Sarah.
I'm Sarah Hamerschmidt, I work for the Urban Land Institute, that's my day job, on a program that researches best practices for improving health outcomes and equity through the design and development of the built environment. I'm also on a planning commission here, I've been on planning commission for about two years. I don't have a whole lot, I mean, like, the guest room that I made into a makeshift office, but I've been drinking lately out of stadium cups, my husband and I have this collection of stadium cups because we love going to major league baseball games, and we've things have been derailed a little bit because of the pandemic and having kids, but we have like a spreadsheet of all the parks we've been to, and it's our goal to go to all 32 MLB parks at some point.
Very cool, thank you. All right, Stephen, and then Rita, you're up after Stephen.
Hi, I'm Steve Borgsdorf. I'm on this council as the representative from the Parks Advisory Commission, where I've been serving for several years. I'm a lawyer by day, I work at in-house legal department at Bosch, and so this, kind of like Sarah, this office that I'm in is sort of surrounded by all sorts of chaos, reflecting the fact that I've barely left it for the last 16 months. And the spot you can see behind me is sort of the only space that isn't cluttered with whatnot and debris from that. What I'll highlight maybe is over here, I've got several soccer scarves. I root for Watford, which is a team that always managed to struggle in the English leagues. My children have selected Liverpool, I think there's some Ann Arbor football, football club scarves over there as well. And you can usually find me if I'm not here at one of these meetings, or, you know, on some teams meeting for work on a soccer sideline somewhere, watching my kids play, so, good to see everybody.
Very cool. All right, Rita, and then Adam, you're after Rita.
Hi, I'm Rita Mitchell, and I'm going to briefly introduce my cat Freebie, who may or may not appear there, she is. She is, she has come by her name in a secured as root. My husband and I were driving by a sign that said free kittens, and I was ready to have another cat. We got her, the next day she got very ill, we had to take her to the emergency vet. And subsequently, after a week or so, we brought her home, and the vet said, you cannot call her Freebie anymore. So she has become a very healthy and really sweet cat, and I like having her around. And I would say that the other, so she's a great part of my life. The other thing that's interesting for me is my background is wallpaper, you can see, I'm very interested in pollinators and the native plants that sustain them, and other aspects of our natural world. So biodiversity is really an important thing for me. I'm also an appointed member of the Environmental Commission, and I'm pleased to serve on that.
Thank you, Rita. All right, Adam, and then Erica, you're after Adam.
All right, Adam Zunki, I run a nonprofit that works on policy crafting for K-12 or pre-K-12 education policy, it was a passion of mine. In a previous role I had in the House of Representatives, and a privilege to serve in a role running that nonprofit, Launch Michigan Now. I also have a small business in town, Ann Arbor Scooter Company, I'm very interested in multimodal transportation mechanisms, and so sure, a similar interest to some of the things Alan described. I don't have a ton around me right now, although I will tell you, I started the call, I just walked in. I have my air conditioning is just back on after not having been on, and so I definitely have a pile of sweat forming underneath me. Because it is quite hot in my house after having been gone for several days and having the AC turned off. But neat icebreaker element, I was up staying at a friend's parents' place around the Glen Arbor area, the Lelandoff Peninsula. And happened to run into several people from Ann Arbor, Dave Devardy, happened to run into him, he was up there. And then I ran into some old constituents of mine who live in Pittsfield Township, who started a small business in Glen Arbor. And so a serendipitous trip, connection to Ann Arbor, and, you know, pleased to be back. But we'll be much better in a couple of hours when the AC is a little more useful. So happy to be here with all of you this evening.
Thanks, Adam. All right, Erica, and then Frank, you're after Erica.
Oh, I'm Erica Briggs, representing the Fifth Board, Han City Council. My day job is running a nonprofit organization called Scenic Michigan, which mission is to protect, preserve, and enhance Michigan scenic resources. Do a lot of things on trying to prevent sign blight and light pollution, so one of the things we also do is to have an annual photo contest. So I've got, this is an office that I'm sitting in as well, that's surrounded by some, it's not exactly an organized office space, but also has, I'm a bulletin board, I don't know if you'll be able to see it. This is a picture of one of the, I don't know if this is a contest winner last year or not. That is a photo that was taken up on the Kewanaw Peninsula of the Northern Lights. Well, and George Bailey up that way. And so last, last, I guess it was in January, I got to go up that way during the pandemic. Earlier in the pandemic, and rented a house, and it was my first time up that area, and I was actually able to give him a word in person for winning that 2020 Scenic Michigan photo contest for dark skies, I don't think this was the winning picture, but it was something, something similar, so. Fun fact, we're gonna be updating our, so my fun fact, we're gonna be updating our lighting ordinance in Ann Arbor soon to make it more dark skies friendly. And that was work that I did when I was on, on planning commission with a number of different partners in the area.
Thanks, Erica. All right, Frank, you're up, and then Jennifer, you're after Frank.
I started out after college, teaching high school history and geography at Dexter High School, not in its current location, the old high school. And then I segue to being director of the State Historical Society. It's an interesting story, but for a later time, through the 1970s. And in 1980, I joined the, what was then called the University of Michigan Business School, now the Ross School of Business, and spent the next 30 years in fundraising at the, at the business school. In retirement, I stay, try to stay out of trouble, but every once in a while, I'll find Alan, and he'll get me into some trouble all the way from Paris. But through all of what I've just described, one of my real passions is ice hockey, I've been playing for about 70 years. And I'm going to try in a few days to get back out there after almost a year and a half of not playing, I have been skating, so I know I can still stand up on the skates. And so this is a kind of a commemorative puck for a victory in a tournament seven years ago up here, and I think it was up here in Traverse City. So we even give ourselves commemorative pucks for, so we can remember these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All right, Jennifer, and then Maura and Deborah, I'm gonna put you two on the spot after that, after Jennifer introduced yourselves, and if you'd like to pick up an object and share a little bit, and then we'll go on to your presentations. All right, Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jen Cornell. I am currently Senior Vice President of Marketing Communications and Events for Ann Arbor Spark, which means I have the awesome job of promoting how amazing Ann Arbor is to businesses and job seekers and the world, pretty much, so terrific job for me. I have two children and two stepchildren, so very full, tiny, old West Side house. My two children are seven and nine, and my stepchildren are 16 and 20, so also a huge age range in this house. But I think it allows me to see all walks of life pretty clearly. And I wish that there was more in this, this was my 20-year-old's room before she went to college and decided she'd stay in Kalamazoo. So there's not much in here, but I do have this, which is a kettlebell, a little 16 kilo. But I owned, I actually founded and started one of the first CrossFit gyms in the US 10 years ago. And I am a certified Russian kettlebell instructor, so I actually am a certified trainer. I did exit and then saw that business for a profit, which I'm really proud of as a business owner in town, having accomplished that. But having two kids under the age of three made it pretty hard to be a consultant in the PR field and own a gym at the same time, but it's something I'm still really passionate about.
Wow.
It's like my secret life nobody professionally knows about.
Yeah, wow, amazing, all of you, really interesting stuff. Thank you, Jennifer, okay, Maura, let's go on to you.
I have to follow the CrossFit instructor, business owner, multitasker. Hi, everybody, I'm Maura Thompson, I'm the Communications Manager at the DDA and the Interim Director since last December. I recently moved my office down to my basement, so I'm in my basement, so I don't really have much around me, but if you can see that glow of light. My house was built in 1925, and at some point, somebody installed an X-ray machine in my basement. So, and like an X-ray, the old big thing panel of lights that doctors would put the film on, that's what I have in my basement. So that's the only real light I have down here, which is why it looks kind of weird. And then just fun fact, my only daughter, I have three kids, and my daughter is getting married next Saturday. So congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, it's a busy time. Awesome.
All right, Deborah?
Um, hi, let me reach back, so help me keep the lights on, so if you see me waving like a fool, it's because I'm sitting still for too long. I'm Deborah Williams, I've been with the City of Ann Arbor for 10 years. I've worked with Alan for more than half of that time, and it's been a pleasure. And I coordinate all the special events, particularly those that close the streets. And this thing that's, that I like to share with you, it was made for me for, by the Full Moon folks. It's a heart, and I found it on my desk shortly after my husband died three years ago. And it's a constant reminder for me of how much I care about the people that I work with and how much I enjoy them, so you all are part of that team, and I look forward to working with you.
Oh, thank you, heartwarming. Thank you, everybody, for indulging in that exercise and going around.
Heather, I think it's your turn. Yeah.
Let's see, I was not prepared for this. Oh, I guess I'll point out this picture that's behind me. I don't know if I can quite reach it and grab it down, but it's a picture of my, my child, my daughter, who is about to turn 19, graduated from community high school last year. And it was in 2019, in the fall of 2019, she wanted to go to the Mothman Festival, has anybody ever heard of this? It's like a cryptid, like Bigfoot or Loch Ness, there's a place in West Virginia that celebrates the Mothman. They feel that they've been visited by the Mothman back in the 70s, and so they have a yearly Mothman Festival in a statue in the center of the town, and Mothman-related activities, so we drove down there, and that's us with the Mothman statue in the center of the town. It was a great time, good road trip. All right, so again, thank you for indulging me in that exercise, I think it is really important for us to get to know each other more as and very important work, you know, this is a really significant project for the city, so it is important that we work together and know each other as human beings, so again, thank you for that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Maura to talk a little bit more about the DDA, and then Deborah, you can, once Maura's done, let's, we'll turn to you, so you can talk about the process for applying to use the space. I get away more.
Okay, I'm gonna shut my video, because sometimes my internet connection is better when my video is off, and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
Okay, can everybody see that? Somebody give me a thumbs up?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so I was going to today just do a review of some items that I hope, you know, will be considered in your discussions. Much of this information you probably have already received, so apologies for redundancy, but there may be some nuggets in here that hopefully will be helpful for all of you. So this is the future development report that I am pretty sure was shared perhaps with the group. But this was a report that was done during the construction of the underground structure. And basically, it talked about the fact that this structure was designed to support a building. The library lot itself is basically the roof of the structure. And any damage or removal of the pavement voids the waterproofing warranty. And any changes made to the structure need to be evaluated for the impact they could potentially have on the structure itself. So just as an example, you can see in this drawing that the tree pits, they have been strategically placed for load bearing purposes. Each pit is recessed, and it's five foot square and four feet deep. So to add trees with this depth of soil, you know, could exceed the load bearing capacity, it's something that would need to be evaluated. And the tree pits also collect stormwater, as do all of the planter beds. There are also subsurface drains below the paved areas, but they are not sufficient to collect an increase in stormwater if the pavement were to be removed. So this is a park in Houston, Texas. So we have been trying to find examples of parks that perhaps were already built on top of parking structures, and we, actually, I didn't find this, my colleague did. My colleague found this example in Houston. So this park was conceived of at the same time that the structure was built. So the structure was designed to accommodate the park, and there were design challenges that were addressed prior to construction. They specifically note that there was a real necessity for a collaborated and integrated design approach. So they have trees that were strategically placed, extensive waterproofing measures were taken. A deep layer of soil was placed on top of the concrete slab, and an intricate system of underslab drains were installed. And so I share this only to just sort of recognize that retrofitting the structure, there are many, many challenges, as I know you all are aware. And it would be quite expensive. I did a little bit of research on this, and the midtown redevelopment I did a little bit of research on this, and the Midtown Redevelopment Authority that built the structure, they spent about $40 million on the structure and then the basic footprint of the park. But for all of the park amenities, there was actually a private capital campaign where they raised funds to put in things like water features, the art, the other elements of this park. And their goal was to raise $8 million. I don't know how much of that they raised, but that was the goal for the items that they wanted to see in the park. So for planning considerations, it can't be stated enough that the DDA's first and foremost obligation and priority is of course maintaining the structural integrity of the parking structure. There are just simply limitations to what can be done on the surface lot, and we can't compromise the integrity of the structure. Parking patrons are also a concern for the DDA. We have an obligation to have safe and unimpeded access in and out of the structure. And the main lobby is in the middle of the lot, so we just need to be aware of that. Security, this is basically the library's front door, so it's just really important that library patrons feel safe coming in and out of the building. And then there is the question of ongoing maintenance when the lot has another use. So who's going to be responsible for trash, snow removal, general cleaning, things like that? So the DDA is in the process of developing an MOU for the near-term activation of the space. At that point, you know, we would temporarily remove parking while permanent plans are being developed by this group. So for the MOU, the area that we're focusing on is within the curb excluding the central lobby and the bike area. So that area you see bordered in yellow and then excluding the blue box in the middle is the area that we are working on right now with that MOU. Oops, okay. So the ramps, there are four ramps that the DDA would continue to maintain during this next phase. Two are just adjacent right there to the central lobby. And then there are two more running along Fifth Avenue to the exit of Fifth Ave. And this is the bike area that, you know, we would continue to maintain. And then water access. I know there have been a lot of questions about the water. There isn't a spigot on the surface lot. The water access is actually on the first level of the garage on the Division Street side of the structure. And the water is housed in the mechanical room along with the fire pump and other connections. So as you can see from the pictures, you know, there's a lot of complex equipment in there. So we wouldn't be able to just, you know, leave that unlocked and accessible to the public. And there is an exterior connection right outside that room, but it is not the typical hose size. I believe it's for a fire hose, and it's non-potable water. And it's, you know, quite a distance from where that mechanical room is located to the top of the garage. The irrigation system, it originates in that mechanical room. And then the connection is, it's the planter on the south side of the lot, right by the gated exit. So that area you see circled in yellow, that's like the central irrigation line. And then from there, all of the lines that you see in that second picture, they run through all of the planter beds. And the system is on, is on an interval weeping. It's a, it's an interval weeping system where at different intervals, different sections run for about 45 minutes every day. And then there's electricity. The only outlet is, believe it or not, I was surprised when I learned this, the only outlet is in the elevator lobby. It's just a typical, what is it, 110 outlet? And unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to have extension cords run along the ground, you know, because that is where the elevator and stair case enter and exit for patrons. So there is the option, though, of running something overhead. But just to be aware, in the past, someone ran an overhead line, and there was an issue with it running against the glass on the side of the lobby. So it would just have to be carefully placed. But there's always the option, you know, the light posts along Fifth Avenue all have outlets. And I think that's the one that's probably closest for access purposes. And then just a few miscellaneous things. That wall is in the planter bed behind the central lobby. And just to note that that concrete, I don't know if it's a special type of concrete, but there are certain types of paint that can't be used on that wall because it actually deteriorates the concrete. So just to be aware that if that wall were to be painted, we would have to have the paint checked with an engineering firm or something beforehand. And then there is the one light, overhead light in the, in the lot that the DDA in the, during this near-term activation phase, you know, would continue to maintain. And then finally, the ticketing equipment in the gate arms, we would remove those. So you would need to think about, you know, barricading that exit for the safety of your, of the users of the lot. And that is all I have. But I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Maura. Does anybody have any questions for Maura? Erica.
Thank you. That was great backend information. I didn't know most of it, so thank you. In terms of the, the surface of the structure, parking lot not being able to be punctured, could you kind of, can you share a little bit more information about that in terms of how is that going to interface with the building being built there? You know, what are kind of just, it sounds like we, the city can't puncture that or the warranty is voided, but it obviously would have been punctured had there been a building there. So if you could just share a little bit more about how that works.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess what I would say is like, clearly, the site was meant for redevelopment. So there was some, you know, there was some plan in place for that to happen. But what I would suggest is, once you have plans developed, you know, we can have those plans evaluated by our engineering firm and, and go from there. I don't know the specifics of how they were going to handle the warranty once there was development on the lot.
All right, Alice.
Hi, Maura. Lots of things that are a little clearer now, but adding on to Erica's question. I lost my train of thought here for a second because there are so many questions. But the, where, how can we, I mean, you said if, once we have a plan developed, we can have it reviewed by the engineers to see it complies with the terms of the contract or the, the, yeah, I guess, contract. But really, that's hard, hard for the horse. We cannot say what we want without knowing what we can do. You know, we don't spend $40,000, for instance, on a plan with the expectation that it could be trashed because we didn't know or we couldn't, couldn't know what the limitations of the site were. So, so I still see that conflict going on. And in the background, I've never really heard anyone talking about drilling holes in the, in the rooftop. It's, if we think of it as a roof, of course, you wouldn't drill holes without making some kind of adjustment to the structure or reinforcement in the structure. But I haven't heard yet anything, I hate to say it, concrete about piercing the, the structure. So I just would like to kind of shift the thinking to know what constitutes an invalid or an unacceptable change in that roof surface before we start saying things that just will be a waste of time if we can't do it.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think, you know, in addition to the, the waterproofing warranty, it's about, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, so, so bear with me. But I do know that the structure was designed to accommodate a building. You know, the weight-bearing sections are in a certain place. I can't speak eloquently to this. But I think basically, you know, what we would need to know is what the thinking is, you know, I don't think filling it with dirt, you know, like trying to plant grass and trees and having it like a traditional type park. I don't believe the structure could accommodate that. So maybe it's more about getting some ideas about the direction that the group is going for us to get more information, because it's, it's kind of this circuitous problem where I need specifics to bring to our engineers to get questions answered. You know, we're paying, we're paying for their time. And so a little bit more clear idea of the direction would be really helpful.
I think we need some principles of the, that would be used in, in determining whether it's workable or not. At least, I mean, to define what piercing is, to define where, what the waterproofing is, what's required to maintain it. I do know that we build football fields with artificial turf on top of concrete surfaces. And we even build them with real turf on concrete surfaces. Not that I'm saying we're going to plant grass. I don't like grass personally, but especially in an urban park. But you might want a little pasture in there. But, but that's, these answers are available, is what I'm saying. But before we go too far, we, we need to have some parameters to know what, what those violations would be so that we can avoid them and have something, be creative about getting around them.
Right. All right, Stephen and Sarah, I see that you have your hands up. So let's go to you.
Thank you, and thank you for the information. That was very helpful to get, get those details. What I was curious about is you mentioned MOU. And I was just curious, because it looks like from the picture, it's covering that, that section of the surface area of the lot that's got a lot of, I guess, the most promise. I didn't hear you say anything in terms of, I guess, some of this latest discussion that would prevent things like food trucks or picnic tables or the like, that seemed to fit. But back to my question on the MOU, is there a sense as to the timing of it? And then also with whom is it? Is it DDA and the city or what's the?
So, so that, the DDA's attorney have been given all of the information. They've been working on it for a little while, and I'm hoping in the next few weeks, we will have a draft that then we will share with the city. I'm assuming City Legal is going to be weighing in on this as well. So we're in the first step of that process, and DDA attorney, after much back and forth, now has everything he needs to move forward with that.
Thank you.
I need to, I need to ask again. I didn't hear, between whom is the memorandum of understanding?
Well, that, that's remains to be seen. We are starting, and then we will discuss with City Legal and to figure that out.
So we don't know whether it's city government or the city council or the council on the commons. We don't know who, who it's to. I mean, doesn't it have something to do with it?
Well, I mean, we're, we have our, our attorney is drafting the MOU with the information that we had at the time. And I wasn't really clear where direction was coming from as far as the plans on, on the lot. So, you know, this is the first step in getting this MOU together, so it's by no means in its final stages. So there, there'll be a lot of details that will work out.
If I could add, add to that, that may sound confusing. Your question makes it sound like it's confusing about why we'd have different parties. We don't know who the parties are, but as Maura is saying, until the roles and responsibilities are known of each party, it's not clear who has to, who needs to be on the agreement. What is clear is that, that, at least in my view, and Maura, tell me if you feel differently, the city is the owner of the structure. They're going to have an interest. And so it's at least the city with someone or some two or three. And that's not clear who's going to be responsible for the maintenance, right? Who's going to be responsible for the capital, who's, and these things. And if it's the DDA, they would be involved. If it's the Library Green Conservancy or someone else, they might be involved. So the, you can put in a draft agreement, the issues that need to be addressed, and even ideas on how to address them, and yet not have that party identified. That's the step that I think she's describing where everybody's working toward.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Sarah, Rita, then Adam.
Thank you, and I'll just echo the thanks for the presentation. I had similar questions to Erica, just about how it was possible without avoiding the warranty to like, do the work that was originally proposed. So that was a really helpful explanation. I know we're supposed to be talking about short-term opportunities, but while you're here, I just sort of wanted, and feel free to not answer this question if the DDA doesn't have a position, but I'm curious what your appetite would be for partnering, this could be short-term too, on like operations and maintenance activities for the space like in the future. Does it sort of, are you thinking maybe it depends on how the near-term activation goes? Or have you guys thought about this at all?
Yeah, I mean, and I'll just give you an honest answer. DDA, we, we're not staffed or equipped to get involved in that at all. I mean, we don't have any appetite for that, to be honest with you.
No, that's fair. That's good to know. And then one other quick question, because you brought up removing the, whatever those things are called.
Oh, the gate arms.
The gates, yeah, gates, yes. Would, do you ever think that just closing that entrance exit entirely would work? I'm not sure. I know there's two other entrances and exits. I'm thinking, like, when I think long-term, I'm like, that would be really cool to not have cars, like, in library lane at all. So is that something that's even possible to do?
Just, you mean, so the area I was referencing was the entrance to the surface lot. Oh. And gate arms not going down. Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, do you think that could ever be closed, like, forever? Or is it, like, really critical to the operation of a parking garage underneath?
Well, for, you mean for the entrance to the lot?
The lot, to the, to the underground.
Oh, oh, I, I, I'm pretty, that's, it's critical to the operation. The only entrance is on Fifth Ave.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's our exit and entrance on the Division Street side. Yeah.
Okay, nope, that's helpful. There's just, you know, thinking big. I just want to know what's possible. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, Rita, Adam, then Alan. You're muted, Rita.
Hi, Maura, it's nice to meet you after all these times we've had some exchanges. I, I guess, so my concrete question is, can, can the DDA provide a little more detail on the locations of the structure that are stronger? So we have a sense of where we have, you know, where are some specific points that might take a little more stress? I don't have any idea of what we would put on, but it would be just kind of nice to know what, and I think maybe this is something that Alice was talking about, what are the parameters, you know, like, how much? And, and what spread of an area could take a little more pressure? And I guess I'd have to say, it was like, it would be so nice if we could be, well, I just feel like it would be nice if we could be involved with the MOU even at this point. So I know you have to get some kind of draft out, I guess, but it would be, it feels like disengaged from us as a group. And I would like to see that a little more.
And I can speak to the, your first question. That information may be in that development report, so I'll go, I'll go back and look at that. But certainly, that information should not be difficult for, for me to get. So I can share that.
May I comment on that as well? As far as the agreement's concerned, Rita, I'm sorry if you feel disengaged. We feel, I mean, I just think that getting a draft for people to stare at, look at might be the most productive way to get the conversation going. And so there's not any intent here to do, to, to. And so there's not any intent here to do, to, to execute anything without input, right? It's just really just trying to get it going in a tangible way. As far as the structure, I, I, I do recall the core structure was gonna be across the north end of the site. And there was going to be open space on the southern half of the area that was blocked out in yellow in the, in the drawings that she had. The structure was gonna go from the very back where the alleyway was, all the way over to the sidewalk on, on the fifth side. So from fifth all the way back as far as they could go. When you think about weight bearing, it's, some of the reasons it's hard to answer your, the questions that Alice had, for example, before is weight, engineers look at weight. It's transferable, so there's actually, depending on what building would be added and where it is, an office building, for example, is a very weight-bearing characteristic that's very different than, than another residential usage. And yet both could be built on there. It's just a matter of how you do like a transfer floor of where they move weight bearing from one location to another on, on the particular structure. So it's, it's, it's a, a, I recognize there's an interest in answering the questions you all have had. We're trying to do that well, but from an engineer's perspective, and I'm not an engineer either, my understanding from all my conversations with engineers is that they can solve problems, they just need to know what you're trying to do, and it's, it's a matter of time and money typically on how to get there. So they can transfer weight, if you have an idea. As far as specific things that I believe you would hear from an engineer, and I'll just share, not piercing, when you talk about what's available on a site, that means you can't disturb the top. You might remove paint, but, but you can put stuff on top, you can't put it in. And, and access for maintenance is, is probably something they're going to say, because the coatings that support the waterproofing do need some refreshing occasionally.
Thanks, Tom. All right, we have Adam, Alan, and then Frank with their hands up. And then after that, I'd like to move on to Deborah's presentation. And this isn't meant to stifle anybody, but I just want you to all keep in mind, you know, I wanna be sensitive to time because we do have a lot to accomplish today. And keep in mind that this is just the beginning. This is just the start of our conversations and exploration. We'll be able to circle back and address anything that we have questions about as we go on through this process, which I'm sure more and more questions are gonna arise as we get further into this. But with that, Alan, please go ahead. Or Adam, was it Adam? Yes.
No worries. So, a couple of questions, and maybe this is, it seems like there are a lot of questions we're all asking about sort of the original intent to try and get at the parameters as Alice described them. So I think it would be really helpful, and more, I don't know if this is you or, or you, Tom, if we could get access to sort of the, what the development plans were like in a much more detailed fashion for what the original intent of the, the top of that structure was gonna be altered or, or however. I think that would be very helpful. And then maybe there's a possibility of having a conversation with whomever engineering firms who are gonna do that work or who were engaged in that process to give us an idea. I think the, one of the disconnects in my head is trying to ascertain what the city was willing to do previously and what we're hearing now. And so I just wanna understand sort of, you know, what the, the completely of the land looks like from what the city's original intent was for the space. And, and how the city was going to alter it at that point, if, if anything. And so so I, I'm just kind of put that out there as a request. And then in terms of the MOU, the the MOU is intended, at least at this point in time, to be, to cover any sort of temporary use pre final visioning, is that correct? Basically, so it would, it would, it would start whenever it starts through through when we break ground or whatever for the, for the more completed plan. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That, that's my understanding, yes. And, and Adam, to your first point, and Heather, I don't know if you shared the library lane underground parking structure future development report with the group. But I think a lot of the information you're looking for, especially if you have an engineer to interpret this information, is, is included in this report.
I, I think, I've not had a chance to take a look at that yet, but I will do so. But I think also, in terms, I think what our, our point is, and I, I sort of hear Alice's statement on this is, it, it, it's helpful for us to be able to understand parameters, but I think at some point before we wanna put forward any recommendations, certainly anything we have to pay for, obviously, we do wanna have a conversation with, with, you know, whomever from the engineering firm side who has been engaged in this in the past to make sure that we're not totally off-base, or at least totally off-base from what the city was planning on doing previously.
Yep, and I think what might be really helpful, I don't know where you are at with engaging a design firm or anything like that, but I think it would be helpful if whoever you're engaging with on a technical level looked at this report, and then perhaps if there was dialogue between, you know, that group and the engineers, I, I think that would be more productive than you know, somebody like me and people who aren't technically, you know, savvy on this stuff to have that discussion. So I think that might be a good place to start.
But just to clarify, the, the, the deal was never closed, so while they may have done some preliminary engineering on their part, there was not, it was not engineered yet, like, that would have come after closing and, and they knew the deal was gonna go forward. So there was some engineering study worked on, some of which the city may have, and some of which the private party owns themselves, but the, the I just wanna be clear, there's not like, we weren't engineering a solution, and, and so would not have those kind of plans.
Right, I, I would, I, I totally understand that, Tom. I'm just saying that I think that, I mean, clearly, if, if the city had the intent of putting a building there, then the city, and in the process of building the structure, then the city would be, would be doing some work to ensure that they can actually put a building there and have this open space area available as well. And so that's what I'm trying to understand, since none of us, I certainly wasn't around or engaged in this process. Right, so I was around, but not engaged in this process, when that happened, I'm trying to gain as much insight as I can. And I think that's what you're hearing from other council members.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure we're responsive to your request. The, so let me just ask, so the city was selling the air rights to the deck. And so it wasn't, there would be, after it was engineered, some some implication to the deck for which the developer had, would have had responsibility in the agreements and the development agreement. But are you looking for the engineering of the deck itself? Or which has structure to support stuff above it? Or anything the city may have ownership of that relates to what we know they were thinking about doing? I don't think we have any of their engineering plans.
I think what, I think the latter, you know, what we, obviously, we, we had a pretty good idea, the city had a pretty good idea of what they were looking to see done on the top of the deck by a private contracting firm, you know, to build a tower or something. And so they were planning for that when the structure was built, that's why it was engineered to be able to support that type of weight. But there was also, obviously, we've seen renderings that have this open space with, I think I may have seen a fountain at some point, I can't remember if that's part of those drawings or not. But, you know, clearly, there was a plan in place to do something to the top of that deck, and the city was thinking that at the time. And so what I'm trying to gather, since I wasn't part of that process at all, is just how much information, you know, what was the city's thought process, knowing that they had this vision that, that there was a rendering completed on, you know, in that space.
Okay.
And, and just, just to point out, the report that you all should have, it summarizes provisions included in the construction of the underground, underground garage for future developments. And then it lists things like where the foundations and structures were put, where the knockout panels are. So I, I do think you'll, you'll find some of the information you're looking for in that report.
What's the name of the report? Do we have that? I wanna make sure we've got that.
It's Future Development Report, Library Lane Underground Parking Structure Future Development Report, and I can resend it if.
I think Heather, I said, indicated she, she has it at least, and so we'll, we'll make sure everybody gets it here.
That would be great, that would be great.
I know that I received it, and I believe I did send it out to everybody, but I will double check, and if I didn't, then I will resend it. And that's something we can post, or Mara, is, is that, is that already online? Does the DDA have it online? And if not, do you mind if we put it online?
It's totally fine, yeah, it's, it should be on our website, I don't know if that's what I assumed.
Yes, I agree, I would be preferred to have it somewhere where I, I can go and get it, rather than storing it on my, in my email.
Okay, great, thank you, Adam. All right, so let's move on to Alan, and then Frank, and then we'll move on to Deborah's presentation.
Well, good, I, I thought, I read this thirty-two page report, it was very interesting. My impression is that that was about it. There wasn't any further detail about what was happening above, because I was waiting for a decision as to whether there was gonna be anything above. But I was, I liked what Tom had said earlier that, well, figure out what you wanna do, and then the engineers will figure out how to do it and what it's gonna cost. And it seems that the surface could be changed, and that will you know, void the current warranty, and then that would be changed in a way that it established a new warranty. But that's something we're not quite up to. The particular, I, I would wanna say that there is another electrical outlet in the garden area that we have used for various programs, in addition to the one that's by the elevator. And so there are two electrical outlets. The, the most particular short-term question is there's a four-inch slab of concrete, can we pierce that three inches or two and a half inches to be able to put in a, 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 a metal loop that get to, to which we can attach a chain to secure chairs? If we put chairs and tables out there that we wanna have chained up when they're not in use, so they don't get walked off with. That's not to significantly pierce the concrete, but to be able to do it enough to be able to put a metal circle in there. That's, in terms of short-term, that seems most immediate in terms of being able to put tables and chairs and stuff out there that can be for social use. Rather than have to figure that we have to have security on them all the time or move them out of the way when they're not actually being used. So that's one thing about the, the surface. I think the longer-term things we can figure out when we have a longer-term plan and what it's gonna cost and how to engineerially account for that forty, that thirty-two page thing was very interesting. I encourage people to, to look at it and see the detail that went into the construction of the underground, that we're now gonna build something on top of it is, is, I like to say, a higher ideal than a high-rise. The, the other thing that I'm interested in is how we actually have on this surface. I'm, I'm glad that the, that there's a memorandum of understanding coming, so that the cars are off and it is not a regular public parking place. And that there's a draft that we can then look at, that is, that is very good. But the question, when, earlier it was discussed, can the DDA relinquish its responsibility? I heard that, well, what is the security provisions that the initiating committee or the council of the commons or the whoever is going to establish? Because DDA is now responsible for security. And so I'm wondering what actually has been, and this also applies to the library lot, to the, to the Liberty Plaza, the security problems, the history of security problem on this surface, whether there is a problem that needs to be dealt with beyond what the police are normally deal with. Is there any information on the security concerns or how the, the public parking deals with security? They deal with it underground, they've also deal with it on the surface. How is that transferred to a community group that assumes responsibility? Or does it simply become part of the responsibility of the police? So security is a question that hasn't really been discussed, but it underlies a lot of the concern that people have with the development of this as a commons and a civic space. Now, there are comments on, what is the security history on this property?
Yeah, so, and I think the point of when we brought up security was in the context of a changed use of the lot, you know, right now, there have been a few incidents at the parking mainly in the underground structure. But right now, it's an active parking lot, we don't have any security issues. The point was, if the lot changes use, just to be aware that there could be security issues that need to be addressed.
And would you see that as something that the police would normally deal with, like they deal with another, any other public space, or would there need to be a special security understanding of how a community group assumes responsibility for keeping this safe and welcoming?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it's next door to a very active library, and it would just be important to make sure that that space remains a place where, where library patrons are comfortable going in and out.
Yes.
I wanna, can I just jump in for one second? I can say that when Spark has used the library, when we've used Liberty Plaza, we've been responsible for our own private security, so, which, you know, is an out-of-pocket expense for Spark. But that was pretty much, you know, the police will do a good job of doing what they do on the day-to-day, but to account for extra traffic, et cetera, you know, extra use of that space, it's been up to us to, to secure that space. So I don't know if it's a public space, if that would be any different with, you know, sort of quote-unquote public usage versus a, you know, nonprofit using the space. But, you know, that's, that's always been our, including, you know, researching opportunities to use off-duty police officers to, to do that work as well, so.
So have you hired people when you have events?
We do, yep, every time.
Thank you, that might be a good model to explore, and I think it's up to this group ultimately to provide those recommendations, so. Yeah, so we might wanna dive into that a little bit further later on. Okay, let's move on to Frank, since it's already, it's already quarter after five, so let's move on to Frank, and then we'll move on to Deborah.
I'll, I'll try to talk fast. I'm always interested in the history of organizations and I've been able to delve a bit into the, the, the origins of the, of the DDA, and I'm particularly interested in documents entitled DDA Downtown Development Plan and Tax Incremental Financing Plan, November nineteen eighty-two. And Mara, I'm glad they have the opportunity to, to meet you. And I hope this is the beginning of a strong collaboration between our group and, and the DDA. And there already has been, obviously, through the gardening and so on, but I was pleased to see in this document some strong language about the importance of open space and community, and connecting links, bike paths, pedestrian paths. So I'm interpreting in this, I, I think this is the founding document or one of the original documents of the DDA, that there's a strong interest in active public space. And there's, there's talk about importance of leisure, time activities, and places for for people who work and live in the downtown to have public space, and we, we all know that there's a large number of, of new apartments that are gonna be constructed in the immediate area. So over a thousand new bedrooms, the library, the Y lot, the D, the DTE lot, et cetera. So I would hope that, you know, looking back to the founding documents of the DDA, that, that they it will have a strong participatory role as a block partner, as we refer to them, but just an active partner to increase the amount of quality open space in the downtown, and this is a a great opportunity here, and we, we welcome your involvement.
Yeah, and I, I, I can't speak to the nineteen eighty-two plan, the renewal plan from two thousand and three. You know, sets out about eight strategies for the DDA to meet its mission. And, you know, our, our role in, in public And, you know, our our role in in public space has been focused on transportation with our bike paths and and right of way areas. So I'll have to go back to that nineteen eighty two document and see what was what was stated there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mara. We really appreciate you preparing that presentation for us. And if you don't mind, if we can have a copy to share. If you're okay with that, then I'll put that on the group's website. And answering all these questions, I'm sure we'll be back with more questions. If you have time, you know, feel free to stick around through the remainder of this meeting because more questions might come up as we get deeper into the exercises. But if you have things you need to do, I understand that as well.
No, I'll stick around and happy to come back anytime.
Oh, thank you so much. Great. Okay, so let's move on to Deborah. Deborah, I keep saying you have a present presentation, but I don't mean to might not necessarily be a presentation, but if you could just walk us through what is involved with renting the space, so to speak. So right now there's a system involved and Alan's used this, which is why Deborah and Alan go way back to to use the space. So and I think it's just helpful for other people to be aware of this because I don't think many people are. So Deborah, if you don't mind, please take it away.
I don't mind at all. I do have a slideshow presentation, which I don't need to do now. I will share it with you and you can send it on later. I'll just sort of read from it. It's it's a presentation I gave to council as orientation. But basically, what I do is I coordinate all of the special events that come through that require using the city streets or sidewalks. I work with a number of city staff, including, can you all see that?
Yeah, thank you.
The legal staff, finance, and with the parks as well. The Liberty Plaza, of course, is considered a park. So anything that involves that use has a separate contract. But the special event process itself, it's a little convoluted, but to me, it's 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 pretty, pretty basic. It's pretty flat. I know this is scary, but it's actually pretty easy. These are the things, the kind of things that we consider special events. The past few years, we've had a marked increase in protests, marches and rallies. And of course, last year, we I don't know that we got one special event last year. So Sonic Lunch would be one of those where it would be using both the park and the city streets. So there would be two conversations happening concurrently with that. The event applications, most of them are held annually. Those events that are happening for the first time would require a special meeting with myself, city staff and impacted stakeholders and things that we take into consideration would be, would it be a profit or a nonprofit organization? And of course, the timing of it. We don't have anything that happens like on home game weekends. Police don't like to approve those kinds of things, but it does occur. My notifications go to a certain set mostly city staff when I'm just introducing the event. And then another notification would go out to a bigger number of people, including council members, once it's been approved by council. Our primary stakeholders are police, fire, legal, engineering, parks, solid waste. So I make sure that those people are included in any conversations that we have. DDA, Republic Parking, the street associations, you have them, and the buses. We have a lot of events. Since last year, we had nothing. People are gearing up. People are anxious to get out again. So I've got several in the queue right now. The logistics include barricades that now are the applicant's responsibility. Again, solid waste, police and fire. So I guess my role with you guys will be, where do you want to be inserted in the process for those activities happening? During on the library lot, for the most part, it's been Alan's events and some events held by the library. But I haven't had anything from anyone else asking for the use of the lot. So that's a very quick and dirty version of what I do. And I'm happy to take any questions. Again, I'll share this slide of presentation with Heather and I ready to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Deborah. Any questions? We've got Alice and then Jeff and then Alan. Alice, you're muted.
Okay, I hope this is quick and easy. You've described events and we are thinking of changes of use, which would be ongoing.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts you might share about the difference and and like, you know, we've already talked about removing the parking function from that certain area. But do you have any thoughts about, as we've already talked about, a little bit about security, about water usage and all that stuff? What do you think might be worthy or all of its worthy, might might be the first considerations when looking at an ongoing use rather than an event oriented?
I certainly leave that to you all to make that determination. My role is basically for one time activities throughout the year.
There there must be some differences, but, you know, I can see it's hard to project when you wouldn't know considering. I think one one thing I was considering was the Sonic Lunch, for instance, that series, whether that could then be moved to the the top of the parking lot. We used to call it top of the top of the park. We used to be the university parking structure. But if we could move Sonic Lunch to the to the top of the underground structure.
That could be considered. It would be a discussion that would be have have to happen between the organizers, police and the staff, other city staff members to make that determination. I pretty much take a look at what people present to me for their street closures and get as much information that I can as possible to present to council so they can make an informed decision about whether or not they will allow such an activity at such and such a place.
Yeah, my thinking of the Sonic Lunch would be one of the easiest.
Yeah, sorry, Alice, to interrupt you. I just wanted to say I thought this topic might come up. So I did talk to the event organizer. And I have some information to share, but maybe I could share it later on in the meeting.
Okay. Just thinking of the street closures wouldn't be such a big deal because we'd already have that area closed. That's one of the things I was thinking.
All right. Thank you. All right, Jeff, you're up.
Yeah, I would be love to know if you've ever had occasion to have kind of pop up businesses on various locations, perhaps even the library lot or extensions to the farmer's market. I'm really, I really think it's important to support our local businesses who have struggled so 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 hard over the last year to year and a half, year and a half. And in my mind, it would be helpful to to have those kind of things available, not just businesses, by the way, you know, nonprofits and artists and so forth, or an extension of the farmer's market from time to time or during the week.
Right. So those kinds of activities would probably not require council approval. I do know that sometimes they do happen. If they are connected to like the farmer's market, for instance, then it would be a process that would go through the parks. I think the restaurant street closures are a good example of the city trying to assist in helping the small businesses try to recoup some of the losses due to the pandemic. But those conversations are always open to happen. And my role is to try to make to try to say yes. So I don't try not to put roadblocks in anything that would impede the businesses at all.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Alan and then Erica.
Hi, the everything works very, very smoothly for the peace day and earth day. Except that there is in the current provision, a sixty working day a requirement for application before the actual event. And the way we are seeing this as more regular events and ongoing activity, how do we modify that? When we're not really dealing with any of the critical questions about police, street closures, alcohol, fire, as as kind of events with some music and some people gathering, which is the basic sense of what's going to be going on here. To modify that sixty working day, that we're always pressing on anyhow and you're very flexible, which is appreciated. You know, but it seems like a much more on sense of what are the kinds of activities that are within the range of what is going on on these active on these two spaces, Liberty Plaza and the library lane parking lot that are seen as regular activities within the normal sense of what is the ongoingness of the commons, rather than every activity being specially approved through a sixty day prior application. Can we generalize these activities in a way that makes it much simpler for the activity initiators and for yourself?
Yeah, if you all, if the decision is that there will be a process in which the lot will be used on a continual basis, I'm happy to, I'm happy to work with anyone. Like I said, my my role is to try to say yes. I will say that the sixty day requirement, if I ever got that in the ten years that I've been here, would have been a miracle. And even your request last week for a Fourth of July event, happened three days later, I was willing to accommodate. So I'm all about trying to make an event happen. So if the process will be that the commons will be used for something more than a one time event, however that is evolves, you know, I'm I'm happy to insert whatever assistance I can to making that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Erica, Jennifer, and then Adam. And then I propose we move on to the next segment of the meeting.
Thanks for this background and all the work that you're doing for the city. I wondered if if by chance, you know, we're thinking about what types of uses might be useful here, but you also have just talked to so many different nonprofits and organizers and event organizers over the years. I'm wondering if if by chance, in 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 terms of the things you've had to say no to even, or if you're if you've observed the need for any type of particular event space or particular event needs that are unmet in the city right now, or, you know, if there's any observations you have on that front.
Yeah, most of the events that I've done have been repeat events and the organizers come pretty well prepared. So they already know what they want. If it's a park, they already know that they want to have like a walk or whatever. So they I will direct them to a particular park. But if an organizer needs anything in particular, I I try to make that happen. I don't anticipate that there are any obstacles that they might come across. We do have some timing issues in terms of, you know, when somebody can start to make noise or stop making noise. So we try to be mindful of that. But there are very, very few things that we say no to. I think the one time that council did say no to an event, it was because it was on a home game weekend and it was at what was then World of Beer, I think. And so the combination was just not going to be good. So.
Thank you. All right, Jennifer and then Adam.
Um, thank you, Deborah. I want to echo what Erica said. I can't imagine your job is really easy and appreciate that you do it so well. Yeah, so I I guess I have just a point of clarification and I'm not quite sure if this is a question for you or for somebody else, but when we talk about pulling a permit for Liberty Plaza, you know, which which I also have experience doing versus playing it for the library lot, you know, is there a distinction between a public park and a space that is not at all designated as a park? Currently, you know, is there is there a point of procedure there? And then I have a follow up question, which I believe is for Mara. But I'm really interested because it's it comes up at every meeting that we've had so far about removing the cars from the library lot. And I know that DDA, you know, is somewhat, I believe, is somewhat reliant on parking revenue. I know that the city budget is. I'm interested to know how removing the park, and maybe it's a question for Tom, but how removing parking impacts the city budget and whether what city council has allocated for our activities is basically a wash if the if the revenue from the parking is gone. So those are two different questions, but I wanted to get them out at once because I know we're trying to move on quickly. So I apologize for conflating the two, but I want to get them out.
Okay, for my piece, I can say that there is not a process in place for the library lot. There is, of course, for Liberty Plaza being that it is a park. So I'm hopeful that these conversations will lead to a process that happens for that for that area. And the rest I'll turn over to Tom and Mara.
I can jump in with a revenue comment. So yeah, DDA parking revenue is down about fifty percent. So we are very aware of, you know, losing additional revenue. But the revenue on top of that lot, it's thirty five spaces and don't quote me on this, but it's approximately seven thousand dollars annually. So it's it's not a great amount of money. More significant than that is the DDA is carrying about thirty three million dollars in debt on the structure. So when you do the math, about a hundred and thirty thousand a year is attributed to the surface lot. So there, you know, there are financial implications there.
Is is there? Well, this is probably not a question, but I would be interested to have a conversation around what do we do to, you know, when the city is experiencing a structural deficit, the DDA has deficit, you know, what do we do to restore those so that they're whole, so that your mission and and what we want to have accomplished as a city as a whole, you know, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. But that's that's a broader conversation, I think, than we can have right at this moment. But something that I think is we should all have at the forefront.
I noted that, Jennifer, and we'll potentially get to that at some point and talking about that balance. All right, Adam, please go ahead with your question.
For sure. Deborah, just a quick question for you. In terms of in your tenure, tenure, tenure at the, you know, doing what you do now, what is the longest continual event? Kind of picking up on what Alan has asked on a few others. Certainly you've had a number of potentially one day events. What is the longest continual event you've ever issued a?
I mean, in terms of over a number of days or?
Yeah, yeah, essentially. I'm just curious.
Well, of course, the art fair is is the one that comes to mind. And then the full moon and festivals activity happens over a couple of days. Tech Trek, I think, might be, I think there were some activities in Liberty Plaza that lasted for a week. But those events that happened on our streets, two days at the most, I think there's an event that the University of Michigan has a fundraiser every year that basically it's like a thirty six hour closure. But the most I've seen on city streets has been about two days.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mara. Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you both. This was really helpful, really useful to us. Okay, well, it is already five thirty four. So I suspected this would happen, but I think this was all very much worthwhile to give this information out there and to be able to ask these questions. Again, I think there's more questions that are going to come up as we go along. And thank you again, Mara and Deborah, for being willing to ask or answer our questions and being available to us as we come back with more, I'm sure, in the future. So the next thing that I wanted to do, well, first, I just want to state I wanted to get that background information out there so everybody had some good information to work with. It's hard to start making It's hard to start making recommendations when there's a lot of mystery around a particular subject. So this is supposed to, that, that was an attempt to help remove some of that mystery and start getting some more firm understanding of really what the situation is. So the next thing that I want to do to move on to is talk about some near-term activities. So this is our first step, you know, in trying to transform the space into a public active space. What can we do in the near term? And so what Camilla and I did is we looked through what was in the task force report and the visioning statements that all of you provided and pulled out what, what seemed to be the top ones that kept coming up over and over and over again. So Camilla, I am going to share the document, unless you have it at your fingertips and can share it. We can screen share that. And then we wanted to do a quick poll about what the top three might be. So Camilla, do you have that there, or should I?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Then actually, if you just kind of, if you would like to walk through it, that would be great. And also, I'd like to applaud you on your beautiful graphic ability. So thank you. Now that we know that you have that skill, we might be tapping you on that.
Yeah, no problem. So, yeah, just walking through this first section is just what Heather explained, the origin of how we pick these activation methods. And then I'm just, I'm kind of scrolled down, but this was sent to your email if you want to check that out. So here are a list of activation methods that we're going to vote on using the Zoom polling function. Heather, do you want to explain that part?
Sure, so basically I listed these out. It turns out, however, that Zoom limits the number of choices that you can have in a multiple-choice question. So I actually took flowers and plants off, just because it's already happening, not because we don't care about that, but I already feel like it's, it's already occurring. But if you feel strongly that that was the wrong move, then we can revisit that. Because I feel like everybody has, in fact, already agreed to that. That is a significant thing that we want to happen, and it is in fact happening. So I, what I want to do is just to get a sense of the main things that we do want to focus on with our remaining time, and then, and I think we're, we're going to have to go into a future meeting. But if we can pick three things as a group that we really want to focus on and move forward as an activation, and figure out how to move that forward, then I think that would be a good thing for us to concentrate on. So any thoughts on that? Okay, well, then I am going to bring the poll on. And it is a multiple-choice poll. I would like each of you just to pick your top three, though. Okay, please go ahead.
Heather, I don't think I can vote because I'm a co-host.
Oh, no.
I also, I think you have to click on like one of the untitled options. Like I got the submit button to head up. If I clicked untitled option, I don't know what that's going to do to this, but.
That's what happened for me, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a botched job on my part. So there's an extra question in there that wasn't meant to be there. So I think you have to fill out the entire poll to do that. So sorry about that. Is everybody finding that they can vote doing that?
Yeah, it, once I clicked, clicked one of the untitled questions, I could vote.
And Camilla, are you able to vote? Are you still?
No, I, you can demote me. I don't mind.
I don't seem to be able to vote. Am I missing something here? I put three choices.
Oh, now I can do it.
Choices on the first question, and then you have to answer that second question, which is a meaningless question, but I think you have to take the poll.
Well, where is the second question? I don't see it.
It is.
You're scrolling.
Scroll down.
Yeah, scroll down. It says untitled question.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, right. So I just click on untitled?
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Right, there we go. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, this, this does not adequately reflect how to go forward in, in my sense at all. So I don't know how to, you know, I can pick some things, but I don't think this is the, is this exhaust or focuses on the best way to proceed.
This was just to get us started, Alan. So this doesn't mean that we're limiting any activities there. This is just to help us focus on a couple of things that we really want to get moving, to help the space get active.
Heather, you said this was based on sort of looking at the, the task force report and taking in all of that public feedback that came in, and then also integrating the common things that, that we said as well. So it's, it's really sifting through all that and bringing those top choices to the top for us to consider tonight or today.
Correct. Correct. All right, has everybody had a chance to vote? Or is anybody still deliberating? Jeff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate that the choice of having a pop-up businesses where people exhibiting their wares, so to speak, whether it's nonprofit or business, I think, you know, this happened before the pandemic. And the pandemic has changed the game a lot, and, and a lot of local businesses and, and craftspeople and nonprofits have suffered badly. And I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, I'd like to be helping them right away, if possible, with being on the site and being able to exhibit, but that's up to everybody.
I'm, I'm with you, Jeff. I put down food trucks, thinking that that was sort of like business to consumer. I took it as more of a broad category as well, so.
Yeah, I did that, too. That was my.
That's what I did.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to end the polling. So everybody ready?
Yeah, this is very exciting.
All right. Ready to go? Okay, so the clear winner is food trucks. Everybody seems to be very excited about that, which I expected. The next one is flexible public seating. And let's see, the third one beyond that, oh, so I'm sorry, the next one after food trucks is actually, it is flexible public seating, and then art. Does that surprise anybody?
It seems like, maybe I'm wrong on this, but it, can I? Oh, it is. Art, yes, 45, okay, sorry, I had to scroll down more.
It does surprise me that art is one, because I think we have a public program of art anyway. It's always good to combine art with anything. But it, it's such a broad category, we don't even know what it means, but we got a big, big vote for it.
Broad.
Art, art could be, you know, dance, you know? It's, it could be line dancing. I don't know. Plus, it could be sculpture, you know, that, that's not really an activity. I, it's just weird.
All right, so knowing that those are the top three results, I see, I have a couple of hands up. So Frank and then Alan.
I'm wondering if art was interpreted as, you know, murals on the sides of the elevator facility or chalkwork on the, I, I just wonder if that, I, I didn't.
I'll say yes, that's how I interpreted it.
Yeah.
It's under beautification.
I'll say no, I voted for that as my sec, as my choice. And I interpreted it more as when the Art Center had their pop-ups, and there were, you know, half dozen, they were almost, I don't know how to describe them, but they were almost like, they were freestanding, they weren't sheds, but to basically sheds all through Liberty Plaza. And you could go in, and each artist chose to activate their shed. And again, that's not the right characterization, but you know what I'm talking about. In the way that they chose, and the artist was present, and you could talk to them, and it was, it was very engaging and really interesting. And so that's, I didn't interpret it as, as sort of a fixed installation, like a mural or something like that. When I voted for it, I, I, I thought of it more of like, sort of along the lines of having, you know, retailers who could come in and do a pop-up space, like a little pop-up store in like an igloo-type situation or a shed-type situation, you know, having that rotate between, is it retailers and art? Is it a mixture between the two, where there's, you know, that sort of intermingling between this altruistic, really beautiful thing that makes Ann Arbor cool, and then these really cool funky stores that makes Ann Arbor really different? And, and Do You Need Destination as well? So that's, Sarah and I were kind of ships in the night on that one, but, but my, my understanding was not like a fixed piece when I voted for it.
Did anybody else have that same interpretation?
Well, I, I was, I'll just speak. I, I wasn't really joking when I was saying we don't know what it is, because it could, art is many things. It's not just visual art, it's not static art, it's, it's, you know, human expression. So it does cover a lot of territory. It could, some chefs would consider that food trucks are art, you know, because of what they create in their, in their spaces. But, so I think that's maybe actually an indication that those two things are closer than, than they are separate. You don't have art without people engaging with it, and people like to engage with food. So those are very compatible things. And, and then I think we've ended up with the other flexible seating and chair. And, and those things, it's, it's, those all fit together. So in a, in a way, the top three really floated to the top for, for good reason.
I feel like I decoupled them, because one of the choices was like dance, concerts, plays. So I didn't consider it to be like a performance art. I considered it to be, but Sarah and I both had art as a static thing, interpreted differently as well, so.
All right, Alan, then Erica.
Well, in terms of initiating this, the first question is, what is the commons? And I think that we should establish a series of public lectures, like OSHA does, of what is the commons? Public lectures on the space and broadcast that would include people like Peter Bowler, like David Bowler, like Peter Leinbauer, like Sylvia Ferroci, like someone from the Eleanor Ostrom Institute. People who can give some sense of what this is all about. The commons is a different form of social organization. And all of us need education as to what this is. To initiate this, education is the number one thing to bring it forward. And so that sense of how do we use our initiating programs to educate? And another thing is, how do we sense this commons as synchronized in some way with the calendar? To see that regularly, this is the place where we recognize Martin Luther King Day, Juneteenth, Women's Day, Memorial Day, the 4th of July, Labor Day, United Nations Day, Human Rights Day, and so on. Through the year, there's a series of calendar highlights, and that the commons should be the place where these are given a focal point in the community. Now that's, that is a sense of how we begin to see this developing as a new kind of institution in the community, different from simply having a series of programs and have, it'd be great. I want to see it as a place where the young musicians, not the famous ones, but the young ones in town have a place to perform in a regular way. But I think we need, in a sense of how to get started, that we are creating a new kind of institution in the city of Ann Arbor of a commons. And what is that? And how do we synchronize that with the ongoing flow resonate with the calendar of, of the country? So those are things that are not represented in this list, all of which is good. I want to see meditation and all that kind of stuff. But how we begin this is, it has to move on a different level also. So that's.
Definitely, Alan, and I do want us, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but we just have 10 minutes left, and so I do want to keep moving, keep us moving. And definitely, Alan, that is not forgotten. I don't want you to feel like that's just been put out the window. We do want to circle back to that, and I think we are going to get into a future discussion about the operation and maintenance of, of the space, and that's where we'll get into that really deeply. This is really just to take our first step. You know, again, this is meant to, for us to focus on something to make the space transition to being an active space for people. So I just, I want us to take our baby step, or that first bite of the elephant, that metaphor that I used before. So this is just kind of an initial discussion about that. None of that's been, been thrown out, Alan.
Playground, place for kids. Playground, place for kids.
Yeah, all of that, yeah, that, all of that was, you know, stated loud and clear with all the engagement that we had, that people want all those things, too. Again, we just want something to make the space active. So let's go on to Erica, Jennifer, then Alice. And then after that, because we are limited in time, I do want to get to an agreement for how we're going to move forward next, what our next meeting is going to be, if that's going to be at the, at the regular meeting, or if we want to schedule something like this again. And then we need time for public comment. So let's move to you, Erica, Jennifer, Alice.
Yeah, thanks. Regarding the last comments, I don't think that anything prevents, you know, a, a nonprofit from coming and doing a lecture on a public series. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the second. I did not vote for flexible seating, and I wanted to mention why I didn't. Say, I, I hope that there would be flexible seating with, when the space is activated. I personally have some worries about sort of flexible seating, being present on the site when there, when the safe space isn't activated. And so I, I think at some point, it'd be good to talk about how others are envisioning that seating being present, you know, constantly, since there was sort of, there definitely was majority support for that idea. And, and how that might work in terms of, of make, you know, getting the feedback from, from block partners. That my final thought is just taking some of the stuff and, and getting some feedback from, from the block partners on, on how they're, they're seeing some of these and voting on some of these issues as well.
Okay. All right, Jennifer.
I, I think I just want to, this is just a quick comment. It's more editorial than probably constructive, but I, I remember when, like seeing signs all over town for at centralpark.org or dot com or whatever, when this was up for voters to decide whether or not they wanted to move forward with this. So I don't think that people voted for commons as a concept. Not to say that we can't educate the public afterward, but I just, I want to echo, I think, sort of what's been said about, let's figure out what we can do immediately, and then maybe evolve it, versus continuing to get stuck under the bus of, what's a commons? What, how do we, how do we get people bought into that concept? I don't think people bought into that concept when they voted for it. I could be wrong in that interpretation, but, you know, at centralpark.com or whatever doesn't really hint at a commons theme. I would just like us to, to, to be able to, as a group, agree on some immediate steps and move forward, because I think that that's, that is what voters want from this group, and that is what people in our community expect of us, and would be just a really great win for all of us as a collective whole.
Okay, Alice, and then Adam.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm not last. But I do want to respond to Alan's comment, too. I, I want to note that we already have a commons in our public institution of the ADL. They, they provide lots of lectures time, lots of activities that are much like what more people are used to and would come to. A, you know, a lecture in an open space is a little hard to imagine. And then I want to also note that. also note that children do have a way of having flexible seating. They put their seat on the ground. You know, we do have a lot of perches that we can provide without having flexible seating. But I think, I think we have to keep it in mind that we might want more of some kind at a point where we understand more about how spaces use.
Thank you. All right, Adam.
So I, I just wanted to say, because I know Heather is going to try and bring us to this. You know, lastly, I think clearly we've got some differing interpretations of, or ideas maybe is a good way to describe it that represent certain terms here. So we've got a little more work to do to build our, ourselves some solid recommendations to council. But I do want to just echo what has been said by several in that in, in terms of this, I think we need a win. And a win is people using the site. However, we wanted to find it, you know, and, and certainly the way I've envisioned today was to help us build some recommendations to catalyze the use of that, knowing that there are going to be organic opportunities that are going to be started by members of the community. And that's a healthy and great thing too. And so I feel like this is an opportunity for us to, to just get the ball rolling. And I want to get back to Heather so that she can help us build, you know, figure out what we're going to do about building out what that, what we mean by these recommendations in terms of initial activations.
Thank you. Well, I think the one thing that came through loud and clear was that everybody seems to have agreement on wanting food trucks. And what it sounds like is commerce activities, so helping the local businesses in there. So maybe we just take that one thing just as an initial step and focus on that. Does every, how does everybody feel about that? You can either give a thumbs up or shake your head.
And fast, and, and fast, you know, something that we can see happening through summer and fall.
I agree. And I, I actually don't know what it takes to get a food truck there. So I think that's research that I can do because obviously we've allowed food trucks in other places. So it might be something that we can move forward with fairly quickly, or there might be some hoops to jump through. So I will do that research in the meantime. And then also do some research on what it might take to allow for local vendors potentially surrounding the space or other vendors to be able to do something there. Rita, you had a question.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to just comment on the, the flexible seating, which was my number two choice. And I'm kind of mixing timeframes when I think of it because my ultimate vision is to feel that I could just go there and relax and meet a friend and, and just have it be casual use. That's something that I, I really have a vision for. I do think that we can combine it with food trucks. Because what do you do when you get your food? You're gonna sit down someplace. So it could extend that use, you know, the, the, sorry, having food trucks there could extend the use into the kind of casual thing I'm talking about. So I, I'd just like to not see that tossed out because I think it will happen sort of organically that way.
Okay. Um, how do people feel about addressing this at the next regular meeting, having this as an agenda item to talk more about? I would imagine myself reporting back on what I've learned and then getting into some further discussion with the group about some recommendation language about those.
I wonder, would it be possible in between now and then to at least survey some of the block partners about this top usage around food trucks? It would be good to know if actually the local restaurants nearby think that this would be detrimental to their, their economic recovery and strongly oppose it. Or if they, you know, if they could see it as supportive, I think that would be helpful. I would hate to do something that is, I mean, they may have mixed, there may be some mixed feelings about it, but, or, you know, would they want to come out and utilize? I have an additional space. I don't know, just.
Right. Or if it could be them putting up stands versus food trucks, something like that. Adam, did you have?
I would just echo Erica's suggestion, but I, that's why I do think that to Jeff's point, that, you know, sort of pop-up commercial activities, you could specify out food trucks so that people have a, you know, pretty clear vision. But that sort of pop-up commercial activities in general, maybe could help paint a little bit broader vision. And maybe, you know, frankly, to some of what I think Jennifer said regarding pop-up artists' places, I know, there certainly are plenty of commercial artists around town and that could be a space that they could see themselves into. So I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, Alan and Frank, and if you can make it quick, if you can, it's six o'clock already. And then after that, I actually want to give some space to Camilla because we, we were meant to be co-facilitators on this. And I took over a bit because I wanted Camilla to have the opportunity to be a full participant as well. But if you have anything to say, certainly, please do. But Alan, Frank, Camilla, then public comment, and then I say we go on with our lives. Alan, you're muted.
Sorry. Erica raised, I think, an important question as a block group, a consulting block partners. I think part of our initiation has to be calling into, into form the block group, the partners that are actually potentially on the block or the immediate surrounding to recognize this as a group of participants in this. There's been too long delayed, even in a letter of invitation to begin to feel that you are part of this collective partnership in the development of this area. And I do think we need to consult with these people. These people have to also see one another as part of a collective development. So I hope that part of our initiation is the development, the calling into form, form of the block committee or block group as it is, as it's called by the initiating committee and by the city council.
Thank you. Okay, Frank.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point about the local restaurant businesses. It has to be a combination of, I guess, the traditional food cart that maybe doesn't have a fixed location for its business. And, you know, Jerusalem Garden and others and be invited and feel very welcome to participate along with the, the food carts. I would hope that we could somehow see this actually happen, you know, at some time in August and you know, the, I, I, I don't think, I don't think this is something we have to take to council for approval, do we?
Well, this, the role of this group is to be an advisory body. So that is the function of this. We wouldn't be out there actually planning this ourselves. So you would provide a recommendation for staff to then get something moving or, or, or not necessarily staff. It could be whatever recommendation you have for somebody to get this moving.
Right. I, I don't know how that works, but if, if we are into a kind of administrative process where we have to wait a month to get our thoughts together and another month to get it to council. I don't know. What if, is there a restaurant associate or somebody who can? I, I just, it seems like this, this is all of a sudden going to be next summer and not this time. If we get really tied up in a process here. Anyway, that's.
I know, I know it feels slow. I know it feels bureaucratic too, but this, that, that, this is the role of this group is to be advisory, not to necessarily go out and plan events or anything like that. That doesn't mean that somebody else can't take this up and move it forward, but.
I was ready to be first in line at the food truck.
What's that?
I was ready to, to drive down from up north to be first in line for the food.
I know, it sounds cool. I, it seems like a really fun thing. So I hope it does happen. But again, this is, the role of the group is to advise.
Heather, I just want to make sure you see Rita's hand. I think it's up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Miss it.
It's hard to see with the, with the background.
Thank you, Steve. Well, I did want to say a little comment about the calendar because it does seem like if we wait for our next meeting, either we need an extra meeting or something to move things forward. And so that's one thing. Another one is that I would like the, to make a pitch for us working we're moving forward onto some work groups so that we can get onto some more specific tasks. And maybe that's for the next meeting as a suggested topic. And last of all, I was hoping that, I hope that in our process right now that we can potentially use some structure that has already been developed by the parks to help us with managing the space, you know? I don't think that parks routinely hires security for the parks in the city. And so I'd like us to learn some more about those kinds of things as well. So I know this is different. I know it's downtown, but I, I just think that we, we have some a bank of information that I'd like us to tap into. Thanks.
Okay, so I did say that we're going to move on to Camilla left, but okay, Jeff, then Erica, then that's it, Camilla, then public.
Okay, just real quick, can you hear me? Well, I, I just wanted to clarify, or Heather, are you saying that, just to clarify, that a nonprofit group or could go ahead with get, you know, getting permits and go ahead and say, put some business stalls up or organize for businesses, some, some local businesses to, to put some stalls up. And, you know, maybe some nonprofits and so forth. That could presumably be done just as part of the general permission to do that for, for groups or citizens, right, on this site?
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted Deborah here is because there is a, there is something in place that allows for any group to apply for any kind of event. So if a group had desire to organize something like this or anything and then put it through the permitting process, that could happen. And if that does happen, you know, it might be great for this group to learn the lessons about how that worked and what worked well, what didn't work well, to then provide recommendations to city council. Okay, Erica.
And quickly, I know there's, there's a feeling of wanting to get kind of get at this and get things done. I know we weren't supposed to be voting at the meeting today, but this actually did have 100% support. And so I feel like there's broad support for this idea amongst this group. And so I don't know if this will be possible, but I will suggest that I will try to work with Heather and perhaps parks more actively since they haven't been here since they're having food carts at the food, at the farmer's market in the past and see kind of a little, if we could learn a little more collectively about that over the month and perhaps get some feedback from, from block partners. If there's an opportunity for me to move this to council before it coming back to more officially for a vote, you know, here in August. I feel like this group has provided substantial direction, unanimous direction on that one issue at the very least that might be able to start nudging for. But I'll work with Heather and see if that's, you know, think through that a little bit more.
Thank you very much, Erica. That's really, that's real leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
All right, making progress. All right, Camilla, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Oh, I don't have anything of substance to add, Heather, but thanks for handing me the mic. I say we go to public comment now.
Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the public. Did anybody want to speak? Feel free to raise your virtual hand, Robert Black. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Heather. Nice job, Heather and Camilla. Way to go to put this together. Congratulations to you guys. I love watching a group begin to form alignments and, and confidence in each other. Your respect and the stories that you shared was heartening for me as an audience here. So congratulations. And also I noticed that there was respectful disagreement that was moving towards alignment. And I encourage you to continue that. The gardening group is a model for you of a baby step that works. And I would consider this idea that, as Adam mentioned, the last time, you already have two nonprofits, the initiating committee and the Library Green Conservancy, who could take action on your behalf to set up meetings or whatever. Like Alan, for example, the idea that a group might come in and do lectures on the site and just set it up through Deborah so that you can watch that action happen. But you don't have to actually do more than recommend it to council. I do love Erica's idea though, that you take this baby step of the food trucks to council and get their blessing and just keep reporting to council this. And then a couple of other comments for takeaways today that I heard. One is there's a clear need for background information and you can get that easily from the information that's on the drawings. Alice presented that to you. If you look according to Morris's comments about the plans that are there, the DDA has these appendix C in the original structural plans. It shows all that detail. There's a 95 by 120 foot space that's set for high development. There's a 70 by 50 space that's low development and an equal space for plaza. You can get that data and have it at your, at your behest. I love the idea that you're learning by doing and I encourage you to keep doing that. So you build trust through positive actions. And then let this vision evolve. The final plan will not appear till much, much later, but that you can learn by doing and, and adjust this as different partners weigh in. You can begin to form these little pieces of the elements of the physical structure and invite the block partners and others to communicate with you. And last thing I'll say is that your work today is an investment and the, the goodwill and the heartfelt care for each other that you shared will pay dividends in the future. And I applaud you to, to do this and to continue this kind of alliance building so that you are the strong heart and core of this thing for the community to rally around as you go forward from here. So congratulations, beautiful work. And I look forward to seeing you do this again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Any other questions or comments from others? Okay. Well, it's only 11 after, so we did pretty well. We're getting better at sticking to our time. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate you. Everything that you shared today and your willingness to be collaborative and think through how we're going to move this forward. I did take notes about other ideas and thoughts that people have said. And so we'll revisit those as we get further into this. I do, I do think, I know Rita, you had mentioned maybe trying to schedule a meeting between our, between now and our next meeting. I don't know if that can necessarily happen because I'll be gone for vacation for a while. I think it's just going to be hard to get people together before then. So if people are comfortable with it, then we'll just resume at the next official meeting and then figure out if we want to add more special meetings like this afterwards. So if that's okay with everybody, give a thumbs up, I guess.
I'd like to give you, I'd like to give you, I'd like to give you permission to do things as Erica seemed to suggest, which can be done without our input. We've, we've given direction here and it seems like there are other people who can take up the flag if, if, if it seems amenable. And I would appreciate the further investigation.
Certainly. And so we'll, we'll report back on that, how that goes.
Great.
So yeah, we might have some, some great things, some great progress made by the next meeting and then we can figure out what we want to focus on next. Or if there's details that we need to sort out still. All right, Adam, you have your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to say before we depart?
I just one thing, I wanted to put a plug in. We do have to create an agenda for next, for the meeting in a couple of weeks. So, you know, certainly Rita, I think you brought up subcommittees. We've had some really good conversations today and gotten some specific areas, I think, that people have questions on. I would encourage everyone to submit some subcommittee ideas and other agenda items for that meeting to Heather. And hopefully, as Alice just indicated, one of the items on the agenda can, can just be a report back from the progress that Heather and Erica have been able to make around the, the item that we are going to recommend to council as of today. But certainly we have a lot more other areas of interest. So I would really just encourage folks to, to submit those items to Heather so that she can put them on the agenda and in really what is just two weeks and one day.
But what is the date of our, of the August, first Thursday in August?
It's the first Thursday in August, yeah.
Yeah, it's what date?
Let me look on my calendar.
Yep. Yeah.
August 5th.
August 5th.
Yes, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Bye.
Thank you, Heather.
See you next time.
It was a great structure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.